Welcome to your city commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two, 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. The Leavenworth City Commission Meeting will be open to the public with limited seating capacity. To reserve a seat, email C Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 4:00 PM on September 22nd. Seats will be available on a first come, first served basis. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19, face coverings and social distancing are required to attend the meeting in accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act. The meeting can be viewed on channel two and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to continue to view the meeting via Facebook Live or channel two and to submit public comments to be read during the public comments portion of the meeting, and questions on agenda items to be read during the discussion on that topic. Submit your comments or questions to C Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 6:00 PM on September 22nd. For call-in options related to commenting on agenda items, submit your inquiry to C Williamson at firstcity.org. First order of business is to, for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business after the Pledge of Allegiance and silent meditation is a proclamation that I have for Fire Prevention Week. I'm going to go ahead and read that. Proclamation, whereas the City of Leavenworth is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes or locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas, according to the National Fire Protection Association, in a five-year study between 2013 and 2017, cooking was identified as the leading cause of reported home structure fires, and civilian fire injuries and the second leading cause of fire deaths. And whereas the City of Leavenworth Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire deaths and injuries through prevention and proper education, and whereas the City of Leavenworth residents are responsive to public education measures, and are able to take personal responsibility to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Serve Our Fire Safety in the Kitchen, the National Fire Protection Association's focus on cooking, fire safety comes in response to home cooking fires representing the leading cause of U.S. home fires. With nearly half, 49%, of all home fires involving cooking equipment, unattended cooking is the leading cause of these fires. Now therefore, I'm Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all the people of Leavenworth, Kansas, to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Leavenworth's Fire and Emergency Services. In witness whereof, I set my hand and affix the great seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, the 22nd day of September in the year of 2020. Signed, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor. The next agenda item, approval of minutes from our last regular meeting, which was on September 8th, 2020. Any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners on the minutes from that meeting? I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve minutes from September 8th, 2020, regular meeting, and September 15th, 2020, special meeting.
Second. Before I ask for a vote...
Yeah, she got it, the special meeting. I wanted to make sure that you were doing both.
Okay. So there's a motion in a second to approve both of the regular meeting and the special meeting minutes?
Correct, yeah, together, yeah.
That's a good point. That's been part of the motion, though. So we are going to begin voting on this motion with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
And aye as the mayor vote, aye. The ayes have it, five to zero, and motion carries. So we've approved the minutes from the regular meeting and the special meeting from two weeks The next agenda item is Second Consideration Ordinance and Development Agreements. We have three of these agreements that need to be considered. The first one, I'll introduce, is Second Consideration Ordinance 8144, 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code, or commonly known as UPOC. Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Police Chief Pat Kitchens will handle item three and four.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no revisions or changes since the original presentation on first consideration. There have been...
No revisions or changes since last week's discussion, further discussion about the matters at the study session, and so unless there are discussions or questions, it's ready to proceed.
Okay. Any questions or comments at this time for the Chief of Police? Seeing none, Ms. Williamson, are there any submitted comments from citizens?
Yes, I have two emails that were submitted to be read.
Okay, go ahead and read them, please.
Okay. The first one is from Daniel Spratt, and he lives at 102 Santa Fe Street.
Okay.
And he says, Dear City Council, as a citizen of our fair city of Leavenworth, I would encourage you to not adopt Section 10.29 of the 2020 Uniform Public Offense Code. You have already opted out of some other sections that you did not think good for our town. Please listen to the citizens who trusted you to represent them, and trust us to make wise choices for ourselves and our family. We do not want an unelected official making health decisions for us. Thank you for your service to our wonderful town.
Okay, thank you. Next one?
And the next one is from Sarah Spratt, from 102 Santa Fe Street. Says, In phone conversations with various individuals, on Monday, September 21st, Mayor Myron Rizwell, Commissioner Mark Preisinger, and Commissioner Jermaine Wilson acknowledged the overwhelming majority of feedback from citizens of Leavenworth have been against adopting the code, Section 10.29, which states, It shall be unlawful for any person to violate, refuse, or fail to comply with the written order of a county health officer, board of health, or director of health issued under their respective authorities. If you adopt Section 10.29, instead of opting out of it, as you have other sections of the same code, how are you serving and representing the expressed will of your constituencies?
Thank you. There are members in the audience tonight who may wish to comment. Are there members who wish to comment this evening? If so, raise your hand. Go ahead and come, state your name and address, and you'll have about approximately two minutes to share your comments with the commission.
Okay. Dawn Weston, I live at 34074167 Street, Leavenworth, Kansas. And my purpose here is I do a lot of shopping, a lot of work in Leavenworth, so this impacts me also. And I want to know what you plan to do for medical exceptions in persons that have objections due to religious and First Amendment, Second Amendment rights. There are people who cannot wear a mask. I have a problem with masks because I have, you know, I just can't wear a mask. It's confining, it makes it uncomfortable, and I won't shop in a store in Leavenworth that requires a mask. And I always thank them when it's someone who doesn't make me wear a mask. You know, if we can go into Walmart, we can go in other stores. That's mine.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to comment? Yes, sir, come up and state your name and address, please.
Yes, Jones, Michael Patrick, 1600 South Broadway Street, Leavenworth, Kansas. It should be up to the individual whether they decide to wear a mask or not. It's our personal responsibility to take care of us, it's not the government's responsibility to take care of us. We make the choice. Again, as Ms. Weston stated, if a store opts to have or require you to wear a mask, that's up to the individual store and the store owner there, and we need to comply. We can go elsewhere to shop, or we can shop online and take our business elsewhere out of Leavenworth County. So the decision should be to let the people decide what they want to do and how they want to go out protecting their own health, and those are the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to come up and provide public comment? I would like Chief Kitchens to come back up, just for, I'm going to first deal with the comments from Ms. Dawn Weston.
Dr. Weston.
Dr. Weston, I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. If we were in a situation where there was an order promulgated by the county health officer or the county health board, which is basically the Board of County Commissioners, then we were to adopt this code with Section 10.29, which is the law enforcement part of the law, how would it, for people who have medical exceptions or religious exemptions, how would that work if you were to go up to a person like that in a grocery store or some other place in the City of Leavenworth?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, glad to answer that. It would entirely depend, first and foremost, on what the order said. If it allowed for particular exemptions, that would make the decision legislatively for us. If, in fact, there were a person that was making a claim that they were in some regard exempted, it would be on a case-by-case basis. I can speak to the last six months of our experience. We have been dealing with various kinds of complaints from when Governor Kelly issued the initial order, there was a series of follow-up orders, a lot of discussion about that. We took it from an approach of education. We had a lot of conversations with people. We had a lot of conversations between the person that was potentially in violation and the Health Department. At no time during these last six months have we been compelled to take any enforcement action on a person. We've had conversations with stores like Walmart and Home Depot. They are not calling the police and asking for enforcement if a person comes into the store and is not wearing a mask. In fact, I'm not aware of any business that's calling us and asking us to take enforcement action relative to this. I would share with the mayor and the commission that we have already had in existence the ability, over the course of the last six months, to refer people for prosecution if, in fact, there was a violation, just not here at the local level in municipal court, which is what this would establish. That would have been done through Mr. Thompson's office. Again, I'll reiterate, we have not felt compelled during these last six months. By and large, the community has reacted very appropriately in those circumstances.
Mr. Waters is our city attorney, and I would just like him to briefly just talk a little bit about the statutes that we are contemplating with respect to an enforcement action, not changing any law because it is an existing statute and statutes, and I'd just like you to give the commission and the folks, the citizens in Leavenworth, a little perspective or context on this particular section of the UPOC.
Sure. So David Waters, city attorney, and I think we have two issues here that I'm going to break up a little bit. The first one is that what is before you tonight is not a face mask requirement. That's not part of this. There is a statewide order from the governor which allows counties the ability to exempt themselves and opt out of that. Leavenworth County has opted out of that, and the county has not itself issued a face mask order itself. And what is tonight is not an order of the city requiring face masks. That's different than what private businesses may require, you know, the no shirts, no shoes, no service type of thing, but I do want to make it clear that adoption of this UPOC provision tonight is not a face mask requirement, it is not a limitation on mass gathering, it's not any of those types of things. There is a, I'm speaking a little bit, you know, I do not represent Leavenworth County, and so I'm speaking a little bit more now in their sphere of what their powers are and such. So with that caveat, as you mentioned, the Leavenworth County also sits as the Board of Health for the county. They have a number of powers under state statute when it comes to quarantine, handling pandemics, and such. They also have the authority to hire a local health officer. I believe that might have been the reference to an unelected official.
Correct.
And under state statute, the local health officer has powers as well. Those are statutes that have been around since 1901. Some of them have started. 1923, the last time I saw them updated was in 1979. So these are longstanding statutes that have been in place. I'll give you an example of a couple of them. Kansas Statute 65-119 gives the Joint Board of Health or the local health officer the power to prohibit public gatherings. That's the type of power that they have. And indeed, in March, the Leavenworth County Health Department, the health officer, did issue an order that had limitations on mass gathering size. That was done pursuant to this statute. There are other statutes as well, allowing the county or the local health officer to make individuals that are sick remain in isolation or go into quarantine. There are some broad powers that are generally speaking that the local health officer shall use all known measures to prevent the spread of infectious diseases. That's kind of a catch-all provision, so things that we can't think of, you know, maybe, you know, six months ago, you know, we didn't know face mask thing, is it face shields or what have you, but it gives them that kind of that flexibility to do that, and they can do that by an order. Right now, the county does not have an order in place, to my understanding. You know, the governor had issued certain orders, and the county did not feel that they needed to add upon those. Now, the statutes also do allow the county to order any sheriff, deputy sheriff, or other law enforcement officer of the state to assist in the execution or enforcement of the order. Notwithstanding that language, back this spring, there was some concern among city prosecutors throughout the state as to whether because some of these provisions were in statute but were not in city code, could they actually enforce them in municipal court? And that goes to Chief Kitchens' comments about the county attorney in here having the authority, but municipalities not being able to handle what are misdemeanors in municipal court. A violation of a county order is already, under state statute, a misdemeanor. So this is not a new law. This is something that's been, there is already a misdemeanor. It goes to who can enforce it. Chief Kitchens mentioned that the, again, the county attorney, there's been some question about whether language about law enforcement officer being able to execute, whether that included city prosecutors and the ability to include them in municipal court. To resolve this gap, the Kansas League of Municipalities crafted this provision in the 2020 version of the Uniform Public Offense Code to clarify that, yes, these misdemeanors may be enforced in municipal court, consistent with the statutes that have been on the books for quite some time on this. And it gives that clarifying authority for them to do that. Now, again, as of right now, there is no order of the county health officer to enforce. Should there be one, should the necessity of one arise, then perhaps this would come into play. And I'll give an example. Say that the county health officer reissues part of its March order limiting mass gatherings to 10 people. That's something they ordered back in March. They compel the law enforcement agencies to help enforce on that. Where the rubber hit the road, where the gap was, can we enforce that in municipal court? This now clears that up, but it's not creating any new powers in statute in this. Finally, I want to address one other aspect of this. You will note that this section of the UPO does not address written orders of the governor, for example, and there is an important reason for that. In this legislative session, some compromise legislation between the governor and the legislature, House Bill 2016, that removed enforcement of the governor's orders from the criminal realm, municipal court, and said that those may be enforced by the attorney general or through a civil action by the district attorney or the county attorney. So that is why this doesn't have that as a misdemeanor, because the legislature took that out from the criminal realm. Now, the legislature did not change the county provisions. They did not change the county statutes, they did not change the county powers, they did not change any of that, their ability to do that. So that is why you don't see the state orders mentioned in the Uniform Public Offense Code. My guess would have been if that legislation hadn't been that way, it probably would, but because it took it to a civil, this is the language that was crafted by the league.
That's an important point, because I did, when I talked to certain people who were concerned, they did want to know about what was happening at the state level in terms of the executive orders that can be and have been issued by the governor, so I appreciate that clarification. Anything else, Mr. Waters?
No, I think those are my comments.
Okay.
I'm happy to take any questions, of course.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to know, I'd like to see if any of my fellow commissioners have questions for Mr. Waters at this point. Commissioner Preisinger?
Mr. Waters, please restate or explain that if the county does give an order, the county sheriff and his or her officers then have enforcement ability, not necessarily responsibility, but ability.
Could be more than that. So state statute gives, when the local health officer gives an order, state statute says that the local health officer, that individual, that person, may order any sheriff, deputy sheriff, or other law enforcement officer of the state, or any subdivision, the City of Leavenworth being a subdivision of the state, to assist in the execution or enforcement of any order issued under this section. So I could make an argument, I think, that maybe that should extend to prosecution in municipal court. There was enough of a concern among the prosecutors, as I understand it, that that really meant more to the power to issue citations and not prosecution, and so therefore, to clarify that gap, that was, this is the language that is being included here.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Waters or city attorney from my fellow commissioners?
Commissioner Leonhard, just to Mr. Waters, thank you for the explanation. Very thorough.
Yes, Commissioner Bowder?
I just have a question. Is it true that the City of Lansing already passed this?
Mr. Kramer, have you been able to determine whether the City of Lansing has passed the UPOC for 2020?
Yes, they have.
Okay. And just, Commissioner Bowder, did you hear, did you hear Mr. Kramer?
He said yes, correct?
Yes. And I did ask, because not that, I mean, we're going to make our decision based on our responsible...
I know that.
Right, our responsible...
I know, I just was curious about that.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, and I just, I was somewhat curious too about other, and it really is just, it's just a fact, but something that, you know, we need, you know, we can take into consideration, but we're focused on what our responsibilities are as the elected officials for the City of Leavenworth. And there have been a lot of other cities, in fact, I had, I asked the city manager if he'd have the city clerk just make a kind of an inquiry in terms of the listserv, and there's about 60, in terms of cities that responded, there are 66 cities that have either implemented this UPOC for 2020, or will implement it and approve it in the very near future. So that is just some information, kind of a survey that we did, informal, not rigorous or anything like that, but, and so it's something that is done every year in the municipalities and the cities of the state of Kansas. Any other questions or comments from, yes, Commissioner Bowder?
I just would have one more comment. I would rather our city be governing itself rather than the county sheriff, so I would rather it be in our municipal court as far as violations of it. Pick the word.
Right. If, you have, you have...
I had a question.
Well, wait a minute, I'll have you come back up and, Mr. Waters, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, I did have one point I wanted to leave, I did leave out, as to the questions about exceptions and stuff, and Chief Kitchens is absolutely right, that that all goes to the language of the order, and I think if you remember some of the orders that came out, there were all, you know, a list of exceptions for when it came to mass gatherings or what have you, and, you know, of the cities that I've seen, and of course even the state one, there are lists of exceptions for, you know, young child, medical reasons and things like that. So it would certainly depend on what the order actually says. The city could only enforce in that case unless the city were to adopt its own ordinance in some way, could only enforce the terms of what the county health order requires.
Okay, that's a good clarification. Thank you. Mr. Patrick?
No, Jones.
Jones, Mr. Jones, come on up. Mr. Jones, state your address again, please.
1600 South Broadway Street.
Okay. What's your comment, sir?
I was just asking if to clarify or if there's going to be any carve-outs or exceptions, like you said, I mean, is this, you know, when you walk out the door, you got to put your mask on or if...
Right now, there is no order for face masks.
But if the order is, will there be carve, you know?
That would be an issue for the county if they were to order one, or, you know, the governor's order, should the county decide to not exempt itself, I don't have the list of what all the exceptions are under the governor's order, but conceivably, Leavenworth County could do two things. They could decide to no longer exempt themselves from the county order, from, I'm sorry, from the state order, and so whatever the state order is, would apply. Important distinction, that would not be a county order under this. That's a pass through, that would still be a state order. So just because, so that's, there are two things, the county could just not exempt themselves from the state order, and we'll just use face masks as the example here, and if they decided we're no longer could exempt Leavenworth County, that is the governor's order. That being a governor's order and not an order of the county could only be enforced through a civil action.
Right.
So the only way that this would apply then, as to face masks at this time, is if the county itself decided, we want to go further than what the governor's order says, or we want to go different, or we want to issue some order on our own, at that point, it would become a separate county order, not just a pass-through of a state order.
Mr. Jones, any, did you understand, any other questions or...
No, I was just looking to see if there, you know, we made exceptions, we made carve-outs, you know, I wasn't clear on, but that's not, that wouldn't be our responsibility in terms of... Right, but that would be the county.
So, yeah, as you leave here today, there is no face mask order in effect in Leavenworth County. And after this vote, there would still not be one. But this would be that if the county should issue an order and compel by statute the police officers to enforce that county order, then it could be prosecuted in municipal court.
But the county order can either, can exceed the government's or the governor's statute, or they could go less.
But now we're getting into a big area of the extent to which one power has others. Generally speaking, a, under home rule authorities, that a county or a city can issue more strict guidelines or requirements than the governor can. They cannot completely cancel them out or conflict or contradict it. But so, for, you know, for example, the governor says that the order is in effect till October 15th, and Leavenworth decides they want to do theirs until November 15th, that is something that they would have the power to do. So the county could conceivably issue a more strict order. Most of the governor's orders on all these topics have authorized and made clear that local municipalities may issue more stringent orders if that is appropriate for their county.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate it. I will just, any other comments or questions from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Preisinger?
Mr. Mayor, this afternoon, I just had an occasion to talk to Mayor Mike Smith of Lansing, just to understand what they went through, and they passed this unanimously two, three weeks ago, and I asked him, just hypothetically, you know, how do you see this playing out? And he says, obviously, there's no order, we do not make the orders, they are duty-bound to enforce, or I guess enforce, the orders of the county health officer or the Board of County Commissioners, but they would deal with it on a case-by-case basis, as our chief has said. And, you know, just want to make that clear, and I know everyone's talking about the face mask now, we're... We're, as, I think it's, hopefully it's clear, we are not talking about face mask here. We are not making a face mask order. Uh, and one of the emails to us from, the first one, uh, Mr. Spratt said that we opted out of one of the provisions. Uh, I wanna make it clear too, that that's really not, uh, it was a sexual, uh, sexual crimes provision. We, when people say we opted out of it, some people are saying that we went soft on sexual crimes. What we did was put more teeth into it. We pushed it up to the district court level because it was a court of record. People could get, uh, that were found guilty of those crimes, that court could deal with them much more harshly than a municipal court would. So saying that we opted out of that, uh, is a little bit of, uh, it's a stretch, in my opinion. And, uh, I, I, as Ms. Spratt said, uh, I had quite a few emails, uh, I would say, oh, seventy-five or so, of which ten probably expressed a lot of original thought, and, uh, I'd say sixty to sixty-five were copy and paste. Some of them signed, some of them unsigned, but saying exactly the same thing. I had quite a few phone conversations, uh, and I talked with people in the city, a few people in the city. Uh, overwhelmingly on the emails, I will admit, uh, people were against it. Uh, people I talked with in the city, uh, had quite a few that said, you know, you, you need to do that. They said, you need to enforce a mask order, and I had to explain to them too, we are not here to do the mask order. So, I, I did hear from, uh, uh, a cross-section of the city, but the total number I heard from probably is less than a quarter of one percent. You know, when you figure we've got thirty thousand people, and I heard from, you know, seventy-five or so, may, maybe a hundred with people I saw in town. But I had people on both sides of the, uh, on the issue. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
On the, uh, I, I'll ask Chief Kitchens to be brief, but just in terms of those, I think there were four, what Commissioner Price, or was, Preisinger was talking about with respect to those opting out of those sexual, uh, offenses, just very briefly, um, just state for the commissioners what we're, what we're doing there.
Yes, sir. On July thirty-first, the Kansas Court of Appeals issued a decision that indicated if you are found guilty of a, one of those four sex crimes, um, i- in order for you to be required to register as a sex offender, it must be in a court of record. And so, it was through the work of our city prosecutor, Catalina Thompson, and Mr. Thompson, and their recommendation that we not pass them here and, uh, prosecute those cases in district court, which is a court of record, so that they could suffer the full provisions of that state statute.
Okay.
One other thing, uh,
Mr. Preisinger?
On many of the emails that I received, uh, almost all of them, especially the copy and paste, said, we are against granting this, uh, type of power to an unelected official. Where I think they're making, uh, reference to the health officer, county health officer. And it, that's not what we're here to discuss, or that's not that matter at hand here. That, that power, if you consider a power, was given to them by the Kansas State Legislature. And, uh, I guess they can take it away, we cannot. But we have nothing to do with whether that county health officer has that authority or not. The state, it's very clear, the state, uh, gives that authority, we cannot, uh, take it away from them. So, when I, those emails, I, and the people I talked with, uh, I made sure they understood that, you know, if, I understand they're opposed to county health officer and unelected person doing it, and I don't, neither agree nor disagree, but I did say, that is not our call. The state has made that call, the state legislature.
Yeah, and it's not just, it's, and, and as Mr. Waters talked about in terms of those statutes, I'll just say one other thing. It's, it's not only the, uh, the, the local health officer for the county, it's the, it's the county, uh, board of health, which in Leavenworth County is the board of county commissioners. So, I mean, the, the statutes reference both of those entities as having that, um, statutory authority to go ahead and issue an order if they deem that, uh, they want to do that. So, any other questions or comments?
I have one more.
One more time, one more. Dr. West, you go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
My question still is on, uh, medical exemptions and other, and understanding that if an individual has a medical exemption, law enforcement cannot ask them what the, uh, the problem is, under HIPAA.
Right.
So, and I have a problem because, I, I like Pat over here, his people have enough to deal with crime, real crime-wise, than to make them the bad guys, have to go up to people and tell them to wear a mask.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're at the point now where, um, we've had, uh, Mr. Kramer, did you have anything? We've had, I think, a good discussion, um, and if there are no other comments or questions.
Could I, uh, Mr. Mayor, could I ask the chief, uh, uh,
Chief, I don't wanna put you on the, uh, spot, but how do you see some of this playing out?
I, uh, I don't think you're,
I can hear you.
Uh, uh, you know, hypothetically, what do you see, if a mask order, if a mask?
Hold, hold on a minute, please. Hold on a minute, please.
Man, we're loud, we can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
You, you can't hear me, though?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Hypothetically, and let's use a mask order, obviously, the health officer can order other things other than mask, but the mask is the elephant in the room, as we all know, so, uh, what are your thoughts, chief?
So, how I would see it playing out, which is what we've sort of been operating the premise from the entire time, would be absolute utter defiance is probably when we would have a discussion about issuing a citation under this provision for a person that is in violation of a health order. Again, it's important to reiterate, it entirely depends on what the order says. Um, a better example might be if the governor or if the county health officer issued an order that says no in-seat dining in a restaurant. And we have four or five restaurants in our community, one of which says, I don't care what the order is, I'm having people in my restaurant. And we might have all the empathy in the world for them as a business and trying to function and survive and make do, but it would not be fair to the other four restaurants in our community that are complying and doing takeout, where a restaurant that says, I'm just not going to comply, that would be probably an opportunity, or at least we would be having a discussion at that point for issuing a citation under ten point two-nine. But that would be after probably several conversations. I mean, I know the owners of all the restaurants in town, I would probably visit with them, that's what we did before, and seemed to work it out and come to a proper conclusion. But I think we have an obligation, uh, based on, uh, what happens in these circumstances, to, uh, give ourselves, uh, the authority to take action when we are confronted with that, and that's what this does, simply and efficiently here in our community. But that would be my best example of how it might play out, um, you know, in our community.
I, I think that's an important point, if David Waters, city attorney, is that the elements of police discretion and prosecutorial discretion remain.
Yep.
In, in all of these.
That's a good point. Okay, listen, I think we've had, thank you, thank you, chief, thank you, Mr. Waters, uh, thank you, citizens. I think we've had a, a robust discussion, and, um, I appreciate the input from all the citizens, and Mr. Preisinger, Commissioner Preisinger kinda went over, uh, what he was given or feedback he received, and I would say probably all the, his fellow commissioners were in the same boat. Um, and, I don't know, I didn't answer all the emails, and I did talk to a number of people on the phone, but we are where we are, and there have been no changes since first consideration, which we did two weeks ago. We've had a good discussion, but there have been no changes since first consideration. So ordinance number eighty-one forty-four is now presented for second consideration and requires a roll-call vote, and I'm going to begin, uh, voting with Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, four to one, the motion carries. So we've, uh, adopted ordinance number eighty-one forty-four, um, and that includes that particular agenda item. If, if, uh, citizens, you're, you're welcome to stay, but if, if you wish to leave, that's, uh, perfectly fine. Just whatever you would like to do. Thank you for coming. The next, uh, agenda item is ordinance eighty-one forty-five, twenty-twenty, intersection traffic control device master index. And Chief Kitchens, up again.
Mr. Mayor, commission, uh, upper second consideration, there have been no changes or revisions since original presentation at first consideration. Just as a very brief reminder, uh, all of the intersections in our community are controlled, uh, through either signal or sign, and every year, we ask the commission to, uh, adopt and, uh, reapprove those. There have been no changes from last year to this year, uh, and so, uh, unless there are questions or discussions, it's ready to proceed.
Any questions or comments for Chief Kitchens? There are, as he said, there's been no changes since first consideration. Uh, ordinance number eighty-one forty-five is now presented for second consideration, requires a roll-call vote. We're gonna begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
You guys disappeared again.
Okay, well, we'll take a pause, let's, you know.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us?
I guess that concludes the meeting.
We, uh, we can hear.
No, let us, let us try to get, we've been good, I mean,
You can hear you guys, Mike. No, we just, I wouldn't see that. Mark, no.
No.
Can you hear me?
Taylor's trying to fix us.
Hey, thumbs up if y'all can hear us.
We can hear you.
Aye, they said they can hear us.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us? No, we can't hear you. I can hear Nancy and Jermaine.
Yes.
Oh, and they're, you just disappeared again.
Yeah, Westbrook's working on it yet.
Yeah, he probably is. Can you hear us now? Yes.
Sir.
Oh, good. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
And how about the mayor? Can you, can you hear me? The mayor?
Yeah.
Good.
Probably without the mic.
That's good.
I do, I do have a loud voice, but with these masks, I try to make it even louder. Uh, so, ordinance number eighty-one forty-five is now presented for second consideration, requires a roll-call vote. We're gonna start voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries. So we've, uh, approved ordinance number eighty-one forty-five. Next is ordinance eighty-one forty-six, condemnation of land for Sixteenth Terrace and Thornton Drainage Project.
Mr. Mayor and commission, uh, it's been two weeks since we talked about this, so I'm gonna briefly go over what this item is. Uh, the city is working on a multi-phase storm water control project in the area of South Sixteenth Terrace, um, just north of Vilas Street. Uh, the city has completed multiple phases of that project as we move, uh, storm water from the north to the south. As we move into the next design phases, we have a number of temporary construction easements and one permanent drainage easement that we need to move forward with these projects. City staff has been working diligently to try to work with property owners in that area, and we've come to an impasse with a number of those. The list has not changed from first consideration ordinance. And so we had asked you to, uh, approve this item on second consideration, so we can move the project forward. We have Mike Hooper, Deputy Director of Public Works, on the line if you have any further questions.
Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Hooper?
Uh, Mr. Hooper, in the, since we first considered this two weeks ago, uh, how many names have dropped off the list that, uh,
None.
None? Okay, yeah.
List is the same.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hooper?
I believe we started with twenty-two properties on the list. That was a total, I think, of thirty-four easements we were looking to acquire.
Yeah, we did a resolution, and from the resolution to the first reading, there, that we did, we made some headway, but have not, have stalled out since then.
Right.
And just clarification, Mr. Hooper, all but one of the properties are temporary easements, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
That we just needed to deploy equipment into it, and then we'd, you know, reseat it, resaw it, whatever, take it back to its original condition?
I thought there was one that's had, um,
One was a permanent drainage easement.
All but one, I said. Okay, I forgot it here, I'm sorry. Yep. Oh, yeah, that was well laid out, and, um, there was a good, um, attachment to this particular as part of the policy report. So, not seeing any further questions or comments? Ordinance number eighty-one forty-six is now presented for second consideration and requires a roll-call vote. We will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor, vote aye. Uh, the ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries. So we've approved ordinance number eighty-one forty-six. Next is the, hold on a minute. Uh, we're under new business, um. Anybody, uh, is, this is where we would ask for public comment from other, from people in the, uh, in the audience? Are there, is there anybody in the audience that, on any items not? On any items not, as part of the agenda, that would like to come up and make a public comment? Seeing none, we're gonna go to general items under new business. First is update unsafe structures, seven-two-three South Tenth, fire damaged property.
Mr. Mayor and commission, Paul Kramer, city manager, I'll start this item, and we also have Mike Hooper available for individual questions. The structure in question is located at seven-twenty-three South Tenth Street, was damaged on by a fire on April third, twenty-twenty. The city received the check from the insurance company in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. The city held a public hearing on August eleventh regarding the status of the repairs, and adopted a resolution, giving the owners ninety days to complete the repairs. We're happy to bring to you tonight, um, news that the repairs have been completed, and we're asking the commission to authorize the release of those funds, um, to the owner of the property. If you have any questions on the property, Mike Hooper would be able to answer those tonight.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Hooper?
Mr. Hooper, do you have any comments about the property?
No, I have nothing additional to add. The, the property owner, uh, did some good work on the, the property since the fire, and, and we're happy to release those funds back to them.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, uh, return the city's portion of an insurance, uh, proceeds in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents to the owner, uh, do we list the owner, just list the property?
Property's fine.
Uh, uh, to the owner of the property, seven-twenty-three South Tenth, located in Leavenworth.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Bowder?
There is a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries. So we've, uh, we're gonna be, city gonna be returning those insurance proceeds to the owner, and that's, uh, that's a good news story. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. The next is review unsafe and dangerous structures, and Ms., Ms. Hurley, or, Ms. Hurley, go ahead, good to see you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. As you'll recall, on July fourteenth of this year, the city commission, uh, approved a resolution regarding the demolition of a total of eighteen structures. At that time, a sixty-day extension was given to ten properties, so we are here to get an update on those ten. There were also an additional two that were given a two-week timeframe, um, to bring us, um, uh, information regarding the proper ownership of those. Uh, that did happen, and so those were given the remainder of that sixty-day extension. So we'll be looking at those as well, so we've got a total of twelve for you tonight. Uh, the first property is four oh-seven North Twentieth Street. This is a single-family house. The picture on the screen is, uh, as it stood in July, and on the next slide is current. Uh, there has been no work and no permits pulled on this property.
And I saw it, uh, one o'clock this afternoon, and it actually looks a little bit worse than that now. It's got a week longer, uh, week more deterioration on it. So do you want us to move on these individually, or?
Um, I think what we'll do, I think what we'll do is, like we did with the first round, sort of come to a consensus on each one as we go through, and then once we get through the entire batch, you would make your motion based on the prior discussion.
So anybody here tonight, we would hear after each property is.
Correct.
Right. Is that, is anybody here for 407 North 20th who would like to come up and make a comment? Okay, so what we're saying, no change, so, I mean, at this point, this one would stay on the list for demolition, correct?
That, that would be up to you.
Okay, any, I mean, that's kind of where I am on this, but let me check with my fellow Commissioners. Commissioner Wilson?
Are we voting on this now?
No, no, I just, I guess, no, I just want to see if we're coming to a consensus. I want to know what that consensus is for each of the properties, right?
Okay.
So I was just, if, if nobody has, I'm saying it's, you know, this one, 407 North 20th remains on the demolition list. Any concerns or comments about?
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, and so you said owner wasn't present, correct? Okay.
No, there's.
Yeah, yeah. Demolition, yes.
Okay. Now, do I need, do we need to have a consensus, or?
I think each Commissioner should probably weigh in.
Yeah. Commissioner Bowder?
I, I agree, I don't, I unfortunately.
Okay.
I agree.
Commissioner Leonhard?
I agree.
Commissioner Preisinger?
Take it down.
I agree it needs to remain on the demolition list. Next is 1033 Osage Detached Garage.
Okay, again, as you said, this is a detached garage. There's been no permits pulled, and this picture appears from July. On the next slide, you can see that there has been no change as of last week.
Okay, is there anybody in the, come on up, ma'am, and state your name and address, please?
My name is Linda Connelly. I live at 810 Kickapoo, Leavenworth, Kansas. My name is on the title of this house along with my son's, and he could not afford to get it fixed. However, we have signed a contract to sell it. So it is getting sold.
The garage or the property, ma'am, if I ask you to clarify? The property?
The whole property.
Including the detached garage, ma'am?
Yes.
When does it close?
I was told when we signed the paperwork that it would close in 30 to 40 days.
And when did you sign the paperwork approximately, ma'am?
The 18th, if I remember.
18th of September.
Can I ask Julie if she's had any contact with any new prospective owners?
Uh, no, we have not.
I've got a copy of the, well, on my phone, of the email showing for the title of who bought it.
Mr. Kramer or Ms. Hurley, what do you, can you, what's your recommendation, I mean, what are, what should we consider? What are our potential options here with recent?
And as with any property that's on this list, your option is to remove it from the demo list, grants an extension, or proceed with demolition. So it would be.
Ms. Connelly, are you the owner?
It belonged to my mom. My name is on the title.
Who's the owner of record?
It's got two of us, myself and my son.
Is that, is that what our records show too, Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. I, well, what I was suggesting is, and sometimes we've done, like, I think last time we had somebody who needed to come in with some paperwork and show us some documentation within a week or two, right, of our meeting. Could, could we, could we do that for this particular case, or?
Um, you'd have to decide whether the change of ownership warrants any type of extension. The garage has been that way since the Commission first saw it. You know, this is a 60-day extension. Prior to that, we started this process in the early spring. We have not heard of any plans of the new owner to do anything to demolish it. I don't know if the new owner has plans to demolish it, to repair it, so that I think would be a concern of the Commission.
Yeah. See, that's the dilemma, Ms. Connelly, just in terms of, you know, it's, we don't have any, I mean, even, assuming that the sale goes through, we, you know, first of all, we don't even know who's purchasing the property and whether that person has got any plans to take care of this detached garage in terms of its dilapidation. And a property like this just keeps going on and on, and it stays in that state, and it just kind of stays around for an indefinite period of time.
From what I understand, the gentleman who is buying it, the contract that we had to sign it for, is a realtor, and he does plan on fixing it.
Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, I, I have looked at this property today as I looked at all of them, and I'm not a builder, but what I saw there is really an unreparable building. I mean, it, best thing to do would be to scrape it and then build a new one. And I think that we, that's been a cancer in that neighborhood for a long, long time. I, I almost think it would be doing the new buyer a favor, that the thing's scraped. Obviously, there's going to be a lien against it, but that has to be removed. That can't be fixed. That, that thing is, that's beyond repair.
The detached garage.
It's detached. The house, the house is different. That's, there, there's no redeeming quality to that garage, and for that neighborhood, I just feel sorry for all those people.
Okay. I'm going to get input from Commissioner Bowder, what are your thoughts?
Well, my thought, my thought is the new owner is going to tear it down. We don't really, we haven't really talked to the new owner, so I would say it's been that way for a long time. I'd give them another 30 days to just see what their intentions are.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
Commissioner Leonhard, did you just say my name? Your bracelet out.
Commissioner Leonhard, yes. What, what, what are your thoughts on this property?
I, uh, I agree with Commissioner Bowder, because we haven't heard from the new owner. I would extend it out at least 30 days.
Commissioner Wilson?
I would also be in favor of a 30-day extension to give the, the new owner opportunity to come in and inform us what he plans to do with the property.
Okay. I think I, I think I'm with Commissioner Preisinger on this one, but that only puts two of us, three Commissioners thinking that an extension for 30 days, it's just, it's a tough call, but I, I support what Commissioner Preisinger was saying, but Commissioner Preisinger, well, we have a, I guess we have a consensus to give an additional 30 days on this one, and what would happen in the 30 days is, this new owner would have to come in and basically tell us what he's, what his plans are for that particular garage, correct?
So, as with any property that you give an extension to, if you give this a 30-day extension, then this would come back before the Commission in 30 days, and we would present to you any new information or changes that have taken place.
I, I, I'm not, you know, overly enthused about that, but with three Commissioners saying that that's what they want to do, I, I can live with that. Commissioner Preisinger?
Uh, 30 days, obviously, this started in March.
Right.
So we give 30 days here, and so we're already 180 days plus. We give a 30 days here, another 30 days, somebody comes in and maybe says, well, I'm planning on doing something, and we give them some more time. This thing won't, no one's going to rebuild that garage. In my, in my opinion, they're not going to rebuild it. They're going to tear it down and then maybe build something. That thing will lay like that and cancel in that neighborhood until after the first of the year or longer, because we keep giving these extensions, and people have had plenty of time. And that is not, that doesn't add any value to that property. I, Ms. Connelly, I'm, whoever's buying that, they're not buying it for the garage, I'll tell you that.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, they just scrape it and grow tomatoes, or build a new garage, but that, that thing is not redeemable, in my opinion. And by giving 30 days, and we're going to look at it, and somebody's going to come in and say, well, I'm trying to do something here, and it's on and on and on, and just, you have to think about the neighbors. So that's where I am, but obviously.
We have a consensus for 30 days. I would like, you know, hopefully get more information than less information from, from the new owner.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Yeah, sure.
Rather than 30 days, how about the second meeting in October? Because that might actually be less than 30 days, because if we say 30 days and that meeting is 28 days from now, and I don't know that, then we're actually going 40 days until we see it. And, you know, this thing just continues to roll. Can we say the second meeting in October? Would the other Commissioners be?
October 27th would be, you know, given the 30 days.
Okay, then we have 30 days. That's the second, okay.
Okay.
Disregard.
That's a good, that's a good point, though. Ms. Hurley, are you clear?
Yep, so this one would be continued to October 27th, if that's the consensus.
Yes, and, yeah, we, I think I, I, yeah, I think what Commissioner Preisinger kind of outlined would be what's in the new owner's head, but who knows? But we're going to make a decision on, on the 27th of October.
Okay.
Now, the next agenda, no, no, next structure, 16th?
The next property is 1612 West 7th Street. This is a single-family house. The owner actually obtained a demolition permit on June 29th of this year, prior to the Commission seeing this for the first time. I don't know if you can go to the next slide, Taylor. And as of last week, it's still not been demolished, even though there is an active demolition permit on it. If you can go to the next slide.
So we, you know, the owner obtained the demolition permit but hasn't taken any action to demolish the structure?
Correct.
Okay. So as far as I'm concerned?
Let's take the action.
Yes, keep it on the demolition list and.
Not demo it, not yet on the list.
Motion to proceed, is, to proceed with demolition of this particular property, correct? Okay. Any, 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 Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Hurley, um, yeah, the demolition permit, you said it was June 29th. How, how long is a demolition permit good for?
I believe they're good for 60 days. And there, yeah, there has been no work on that, so it's, if they came in, they would, they would have to get that reactivated, which, which can be done with permits.
Okay. Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I think we should keep it on the demolition list.
And, and proceed with demolition of this particular property. How about Commissioner Wilson?
I think keep it on the list, but I do have a question, though. If we move forward with the properties remaining on the demolition list, what's the timeframe before we move forward and the homes are demolished?
Once we get this list moving forward after tonight, then we'll begin our process. As you'll note, on the agenda later tonight is accepting the bid for the last batch that we'd moved ahead with, so it is a bit of a lengthy process to, for us to go through. There's a number of inspections that we have to do per HUD regulations, so it'll be a month and a half to two months before we're back with even a bid for these properties, and then it would be another couple of weeks after that before they would actually be starting to come down.
So we're having that two to three months?
Yeah, we'd be looking at probably three months realistically before they would be coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this particular property? Ms. Hurley, anything else on that one? Okay, next one, please.
Okay, the next one is 1914 West 7th Street. Turn it up, we could have the next slide. This one is another single-family house. There has been no change and no permits issued. On the next slide, you can see it as of last week.
Oh, yes. If there's a citizen here to comment on this particular property, please come and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Tricia Alton. My address is 609 South Hickory Trail, Lansing.
Um, this property.
Your address again, I'm sorry to interrupt.
609 South Hickory Trail in Lansing.
I'm getting a echo. Okay, 609, I'm sorry. Did someone, if you hear, tell me.
I heard the echo.
South Hickory Trail. South Hickory Trail.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, this property I had under contract at the last meeting due to title issues with the property. It was finally cleared up on August 21st. I did pay cash for the house. As of actually today, I obtained a mortgage. The money will be in my account tomorrow for $100,000 for repairs on the home. The foundation was started, and I need to check that he pulled a permit. It was a foundation masonry here in town. That was started this week. The roof and the siding is getting started next week, and those permits will be pulled as well.
Are you aware of any of this before the meeting, Ms. Hurley?
Um, no, I wasn't, I didn't check the status of permits today. I checked the permits last week, I think Wednesday, before I turned in the policy report, so if they were obtained after that time, I wouldn't have those right now.
So where are you in the process? Do you own the, own this property now?
I do now, now the title works all clear.
And what's in general, what's your, what's your plan to, to get it up to code?
It'll be completely rehabbed, interior and exterior.
And how, just generally, how long a period of time is that going to take in your estimation?
The exterior should take, I'm guessing about two and a half weeks. Like I said, the roof starts next week as well as the siding, and then the interior is probably going to take me about six weeks after that.
So you do the exterior first?
Yes, sir.
Because that's what we, you know, that's.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you want to give an extension on this one, I would suggest the same extension that you gave to the previous property, which would be to October 27th, and then we can review the status at that time.
Okay. I, I think, I think that's consistent, and I, I agree with that recommendation from Ms. Hurley. Commissioner Preisinger?
I agree, October 27th.
Commissioner Bowder?
I agree.
Commissioner Leonhard?
I agree.
Commissioner Wilson?
I agree.
Okay. Good luck, and thank you for coming and commenting and letting us know what, what the situation is with this, with this property. How long have you owned it now?
It's been three, three to four weeks now, but I was waiting to get the mortgage, and that came up today.
Got it, thank you.
I do have other properties on the list, if you want to discuss those, or I can wait in line.
We just have to go.
Well, we'll go.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley, next?
Okay, the next property is 420 Ottawa Street. This is a single-family house. There have been no permits pulled and no change since July.
Anybody here from 420 Ottawa?
Okay, we can have the next slide, Taylor.
Go ahead and state your name again, please.
Tricia Alton.
Alton, okay, right. Go ahead, Ms. Alton.
This property I currently still have under contract. It is owned by a business that is out of state, but there's a contract for deed with the gentleman that is incarcerated. I've been working with the company that owns it. They are waiting on the gentleman that is incarcerated to finish the paperwork. At this time, I say it's completely up to you guys what you want to do. I did warn the previous, or the current owner today where we stand, since I have not gotten anything from the attorney from the person that's incarcerated.
Could you just explain again the, the role of the incarcerated? Is the incarcerated person the owner of the?
He is doing a contract for deed with the current owner, so he has to sign off on all.
Who is the current owner?
Oh, gosh, I cannot remember.
It's been out-of-town business.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Commissioner Preisinger?
I think there's no question. We need to take that down. There's, you know, so many things in play here. That's been deteriorated for years and years and years. It doesn't get like that in six months, and everything else that's going on, we could be given extensions for, I don't know how much longer, and I drove by it again this afternoon, and it's, it's much worse than that picture, and it, I don't think it has any redeeming qualities at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
Uh, yeah, I would go ahead and keep it on the demolition list.
Commissioner Bowder?
For God's sake, it's got a tree growing through it. I think nature's trying to tell us something, so I think we ought to keep it on the demolition list.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
I'll get that tree, now, but, uh, yes, let's keep it on the list.
And I agree. So there's five of us that agree that we should proceed with demolition. Thank you for commenting on it, though.
Thank you.
Ms. Alton, and then 504 Miami is the next, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, you're, yeah, no, you're fine, yeah. 504 Miami, this is a single-family home. There has been no change since July.
Okay. Anybody here for 504 Miami? Looks like, ma'am, are you coming up? Okay, good, okay. Just go ahead and state your name and address, please.
My name is Michelle Secuna. I live at 407 North Mahaffey in Olave, Kansas.
Okay, go ahead.
We, um, actually ran into a little stump in the road with some financial issues. In the last couple of weeks, we've been in contact with Christian Brothers Roofing to get the repairs done, so we just need just a little more time to get it going.
But over the last, it's been, what, 60 days, right? There's been no, no work done on the, on the home, correct?
As I'm aware, yes.
So what, what's going to change, and maybe, just say it again, what's going to change if we were to give you an extension? What's, what's going to change?
Well, we've got the permits pulled to do the work. We just was lacking people to go in and do it.
But you're the owner, ma'am?
No, the guy. No, the guy that owns it is out of town, and I'm just here representing for him.
Who, do we have, do we have who the owner is?
Um, I don't have the, the owner information with me tonight.
His name is Ramon Mohammed.
Yeah, it gets a little, it gets a little, you know, dicey when the owner is not here to actually comment on the, the property. That, and we've had that occur before. Um, so what's, what's the bottom line of what you're saying the owner is prepared to do is?
He's, he's prepared to do the work. It was just like getting, uh, roofing people out here, getting people to come out and actually do the work that needed to be done as far as the roof and the chimney.
How long has he owned the property, ma'am?
Not very long.
How long is not very long?
I think March or April, I think.
But, and nothing's happened since March or April?
Uh, but I'm not sure if those are the dates when he took, yeah.
But, uh, the same owner that we have in March as far, according to your-
I, I believe the gentleman who owns it was here at the meeting in July.
Yeah, yeah, and nothing's happened.
But nothing's, nothing's happened, right? I mean, and we, um, okay. Mr. Commissioner Preisinger, what, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I think we've extended this. It's been going since March. We've extended it a good more time, and, and absolutely nothing has happened. And I think it's time to move on it, uh, keep it on the demo list.
Okay.
Move on the demo.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Uh, yeah, I agree, uh, demo.
Commissioner Bowder?
I agree, unfortunately, it's a cute little house.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'm in favor of the 30-day extension.
Okay. Um, I'm in favor of, anything else, Commissioner Wilson?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Um, I am, uh, I agree with three of the commissioners, my fellow commissioners. I think at this point, we need to proceed with demolition. Now, I, I appreciate you coming, but, I mean, and I know he, apparently he's out of town. Is that, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's just that these things just keep going, and those situations, I, I, and just, there hasn't been really anything done in the last 60 days, even, even beyond 60 days. Has there, Ms. Hurley?
No, there's not.
Okay, so-
I know that he's-
This date, September 22nd, was set back in July.
At the July-
I mean, we knew this date.
Fourteenth meeting, correct.
Okay. Well, that's, I think we should proceed with demolition. And, uh, so there's, uh, four to one, uh, so we're, that's what we're gonna do, Ms. Ms. Hurley, on this particular property.
Okay.
Okay, but I know that he's replaced windows and doors on that property since then.
Are you, are you-
I, I don't, we don't have any permits issued for that work.
He has the permits pulled for this property.
Um, as a-
And it might be out of Lawrence. I'm not sure if it's in Leavenworth or out of Lawrence, that he resides in Lawrence.
But he, you'd have to pull the permits here. I mean, the property's in Leavenworth, so-
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, if he, if he's really, he could call Ms. Hurley tomorrow, or I'm, I'm, but I'm sticking with-
Is there a number that he can contact her at tomorrow?
Uh, he, uh, go ahead, may I, may I? Uh, we talked earlier on the demo process. What happens now is if we keep this on the demo process, Ms. Hurley's department starts the process, uh, which takes a bit of time. Has to get asbestos inspections, water cutoff, gas, all those things. The bulldozer will not run tomorrow. But it will run, and she will start that process. If we keep that, if we keep it on the process, and this owner is sincere, he can have something going a couple of weeks, and they come back and we can stop the process. But what will happen, whatever costs we incur in shutting down the water, et cetera, will be charged to you.
Okay.
Uh, and I think they've had plenty of time, and I think that we keep it on the demo list, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the bulldozer will run now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, it looks like, um, he did actually get some permits for the property prior to the July meeting, so I apologize for that. I had just been looking for new permits since then. So there, there are active permits that had been pulled prior to that. Um, we just haven't seen any change, any work taking place.
But you're saying, ma'am, he's-
He's put a new door and windows on that place.
Okay. Does that change your, I mean, the, the thing is, we either proceed with demolition and along the lines of what Commissioner Preisinger just laid out, or we go with the 30-day extension. I mean, any, any, you still think, uh-
Well, was it Mr. Mohammed that came on July?
Yes, it was.
And I believe that when we gave him 60 days, he said-
Commissioner Bowder.
He said, "No problem, we'll get this thing done, and thank you for 60 days, and, and we're good." Here we are, 70 days from then. Uh, and maybe there's a door, uh, new window or something. Uh, I'd be, I'd almost be able to give two weeks or something to the next, or the first regular meeting in October, just to see what, what's happening. Not, not another full 30 days, uh-
Just, let's, let's just take a pause here. Mr. Ketter, what, what's going on?
Commissioner Bowder.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Bowder, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I think since he had permits that he pulled before, and, and there's, there's a representative here, um, trying to fight for the property, I would be willing to give them some time. I'm not sure how much, so-
Okay. Okay.
I would suggest that any extension given be consistent with what we've done, and just to keep those together. Um, if you elect to give an extension, I would suggest to the October 27th meeting.
And I, and I appreciate you being-
I would go for that.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Leonhard, any, what are your thoughts at this point?
Yes, since he has the permits, um, I as well, you know, give the extension.
Okay.
Till, what, October 27th?
Yeah, I, I hear what Commissioner Preisinger said, but I think I'd like to keep it consistent if we're gonna do that. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the 30 days.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, Preisinger, can you, you okay?
Uh, I'm okay with that. I, it just, it does bother me that he had the permits before July 14th. He came to us on July 14th of getting all this done, and we're getting played again. And here we are, and it's not being done. But I'm willing to give another 30 days. But it's, I mean, we, we, in my opinion, we get played a lot.
I will relay this to him this evening.
I'm sorry?
I said I will relay this, 'cause I was against him.
Yeah, please do, please do. All right, thank you, 30 days, extension on this property. Next, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, property, Ms. Hurley?
Okay, the next property is 513 Lawrence Avenue. On the next slide.
Yeah.
Yep, so this one does have active building permits for interior and exterior renovations. Um, and there has been work ongoing since the July meeting. If we could have the next slide.
And they're working on it heavily today.
Good.
Yeah.
So we would, uh, recommend that an extension of 30 days, or, or?
That would be for, yeah.
So, Mr. Commissioner Preisinger, what do you think for, for this one?
Uh, you know, I saw them working on it today. What happens sometimes in my experience over the last almost 12, 11 years here, uh, when we have those, on the day of the meeting, you see a lot of, a lot of scurrying around, saying, "Hey, we're doing a lot of work."
Yeah.
And, uh, so I'd be willing to give it 30 days, and there better be 30 days worth of work on it, or otherwise, we're getting played again. But I, I'm hoping that they are working on it. Look, they were fervently working on it today.
Yeah, and they, they have been out prior to, just this week, working, so-
Okay, so I, I'm willing to give it 30 days.
I agree with this, uh, Commissioner Preisinger's assessment. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes, uh, 30 days is fine.
Okay, Commissioner Bowder?
I agree.
Commissioner Wilson?
I agree.
Okay, 30-day extension, next property?
Okay, the next property is 701 South Second Street. Uh, this property, uh, work has been ongoing on this, uh, since July. If we could have the next slide.
But there's no act, but there's, and, and-
Yeah, they don't have any active building permits. Um, the work that's going on is not, um, stuff that needs building permits. So, uh, from what we can tell.
I, I've seen it improve, it's taken a long time. I wish, uh, I, I, you know, once again, 30 days, maybe. I mean, I see the improvement, uh, 'cause it was awful looking, uh, several, several, it's been awful looking for a long time. Commissioner Preisinger, what do you think about this one?
Uh, I think, this is Mr. Lockett, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I was very pleased back in June and July. I saw scaffolding, I saw you and, uh, some other people out there doing some work on it. But then all of a sudden, it stopped after July 14th. I think it looked like this, the 20th of July.
I was working on the backside. I'm on the backside now, it's taking me, uh-
Work on some curb appeal, work on some curb appeal.
Well, that, I'm still, uh, working on the foundation.
When will you have, when can you get that finished?
I had the, uh, foundation guy come and check it out for me. That's why I didn't, I didn't wanna do no painting till I get everything taken care of. But he, he came, and so that will get, ultimately gonna get taken care of in about less than 30 days.
So if we, you say if we give you 30 days, you could have that thing up to snuff?
Yeah, I mean, it-
I'm very proud, what you did, I mean, you did without us putting a hammer on you. You were, you did a, a bunch of work, then it just stopped, and so-
And I didn't stop, like I said, it was on the backside, I mean, you couldn't see from the street.
I'll give you that, I did not go on the backside. But what you did, uh, I was, uh, very pleased.
Thank you. And it gonna continue, I feel like I say, I'm, uh-
Good.
Really take care of it and get it up to, to standard.
Mr. Lockett, what's your address? Do you have, Ms. Williamson, do you need Mr. Lockett's address?
800 South, it's Benadere Boulevard, A.
800, South-
Eight hu, yeah.
South West Benadere?
Uh, can you send to my P.O. box, that's 701, uh-
That's okay, I just need your address for the record.
Okay.
Yeah, your-
Okay, anything else, Mr. Lockett?
No.
So 30, 30-day extension, I'm willing to live with that.
Yeah.
Commissioner Preisinger has, Commissioner Bowder?
Uh, me too, thank you.
Commissioner Leonhard?
I agree.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
I'm in favor of the 30-day extension.
Okay. All right, next property, Ms. Hurley?
Thanks, Mr. Lockett.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, the next property is 708 Kiowa Street. This is a single-family house. Uh, there was a building permit issued for a new roof on August 13th. Uh, the new roof is complete, uh, as you can see on the picture up there now. Um, there is still a little bit of work remaining to be done with, uh, windows and siding.
Okay, um, so there is progress being made.
Correct.
It looks like the, particularly with the roof, right?
Yeah, the new roof is complete.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Preisinger, what do you think?
Uh, I drove by it today, and the roof does look nice. And you can see that the work has, has been going on. Are there, uh, I don't have why it was on the demo list, it needed roof and what else? Is there other work still pending?
Yep, we would still need, um, some, just to make sure all the windows and doors are, um, in good working order, and that any holes in the siding, uh, and, uh, soffits are taken care of.
So that's still ongoing?
Yeah, so that's still ongoing. There's still some minor work to be done, but, um, the bulk of it would be complete.
Uh, and if we gave them 30 days and they did absolutely nothing, this is not a tear-down, in my opinion.
That's correct. That would not be something that we would put on the demo list in this condition.
Then my opinion would be remove this from the demo list.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Preisinger's assessment, remove from the demolition list, but, uh, hopefully that progress on the, on the, you know, the improvement of the property will continue. Uh, how about, uh, my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Leonhard?
I agree, uh, remove.
Okay. Commissioner Bowder? Commissioner Bowder?
Me too, cough.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Wilson? Okay. All right, so that's our decision on that one, Ms. Hurley?
Okay, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor this with code enforcement.
Code issues and things like that.
Yeah, code enforcement, yep.
Okay, that's good. Uh, next property, Ms. Hurley?
Okay, the next property is 824 O Sage. This is a single-family house with a detached garage. Uh, and she gets the next slide.
Okay, we have, uh, a citizen here.
And there has been no change on this property since the July meeting.
Okay. Ma'am, could you state your name and address, please?
Darlene Derringer, and I live at 112 East Kate, Lansing.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, uh, we bought the paint, we got the permit for the roof, okay. We're not rich, we, I mean, we got paint to make it look better. My husband's not well. I do wanna get it up and going. I wanna move back home. He's not in good health. I can afford, sorry, to live here, defend any average street. Once I get the roof fixed, I have friends now that's gonna help me with the roof. My son's here, and he's got friends that's gonna help me put the roof on. But we got the paint, we haven't bought shingles yet, they cost so much. Then I started to get the electric turned on. We gotta have it rewired also, because it's been so long. The wiring's not up to par now. So it just, but I'm doing the best I can, and I will get it going.
Um, Commissioner Preisinger, any, any thoughts?
Uh, I understand your plight, uh, Ms. Derringer, uh, but I also know, your husband's Herb, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Derringer called me in March or April, and he said, "Oh, you know, please, uh, I, I know it's going on the demo list. Please don't do it, I just need a little bit of work. I've had renters there, et cetera." And told me all the things that were gonna happen and had happened. Then when I checked, there hadn't been water on there for a couple of years. And he told me he had renters in there, so I got a story at that time.
Well, I, I don't know any renters. I do know I left him.
And then when we look at the next time, we get another story. I'm gonna have everything taken care of in the next 60 days. And on July 14th, we do something, and nothing has happened. The only thing that's happened today is some ghosts are hanging from the, uh, Halloween ghosts are hanging from there.
I know, I did hang them, and we-
The trash out in the alley around back, go around back. I know it used to be, he's, you said you used to be duckers, you get that cleaned up?
The logs?
It's been the same since July 14th. It's been the same since July fourteenth, and this, this, this is one that, yeah, I, I feel for your plight, uh, Ms. Derringer, but gee, we've been told this story so many times.
Okay.
It's, it's, and you gotta feel, you gotta, you gotta consider the neighbors and the neighborhood.
I talked to the neighbors, they said they understood.
They, but waking up every morning to that, you go to work, you go outside and you see this and all it does is deteriorate.
I understand that to a point, but there's houses right there that's worse than mine. And I tell, I talked, I'm trying to get this stuff, I, it's not like I'm sitting back and saying, oh, well, I'm gonna pay these guys for a sucker and don't do nothing, I'm not, I want it, I wanna go home.
I understand that, but absolutely nothing has happened.
Well, you're gonna do what you're gonna do.
Okay, um, Commissioner, uh, Leonhard, what are your thoughts?
I heard some of the conversation, uh, this question, but it keeps breaking in and out. So is this, I'm gonna ask, is this something that, I know we gave them a lot of time and they have certain circumstances, would anything be able to be done in the next, no, thirty day time period or no?
Right. That's, that's a good question.
Improvement or no?
Right.
That'd be a good question, Ms. Derringer.
I can paint, I can paint it with, I mean, I, we've already got the paint, I did go buy the paint to paint the house. The roof, I don't have the money for it yet, and I, God knows, I know it needs a roof. That's why I moved out, I told my husband, I'm better than this, I'm not living in this, and so I moved.
But you have a plan for securing the financial resources that, to, to?
Yes, I do, my, I've already talked to my daughter, she's gonna help me. Every time, every time I get, is going into a savings, I ain't even touched. And I won't touch it till I can get this stuff to fix my house.
Uh, I think the roof is the most, what else besides the roof was?
The roof is really the only thing.
What other things were on that list of, uh, of deficiencies?
Uh, the, the roof would be the most, uh, important and then kinda same with the others, you know, the siding, windows, doors, soffits, eaves. Um, the, you know, all the junk out back that needs to be cleaned up, uh, the detached garage is included in all this. Uh, I didn't include the pictures of the detached garage since nothing has changed, but the detached garage needs to be, um, fixed up as well.
Um, Commissioner Bowder, what do you think?
This house is in such bad shape, I don't know how much money it would take to salvage it enough that somebody could live there. Of course, I can't see what the foundation or underneath is like either, but it just, I mean, just going by there, it, it, it just looks like it's falling down, I don't know if it could be salvaged, and if it could, then it's gonna cost a lot of money to do it.
Right.
I would think.
Right, okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, I, I just really hope you can make some improvements in thirty days. I know finances may be a challenge now, uh, but like I said, I'm, I'm willing to extend the grace and give you thirty days and just really hope that you're able to get something done within that time frame.
Um, I'll support a thirty day extension, but I, 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 I mean, the whole financing thing is something you, and, I don't know, when, if you come back and there's been no progress or no improvement, um, we're, I, I think, and we, we're con, I'm concerned and we're sensitive to, to the situation you're in and, and your family, but, so I'm good for thirty days, but I personally am not very confident that things are gonna be different in thirty days, but I'm willing to give a thirty day extension. But, uh, as Ms. Ms. Bowder and, um, as Commissioner Bowder and Commissioner Priceiger said, the house, I mean, from looking at it, doesn't look like, I mean, it looks like it's gonna take a good deal of money to get it up to code, so.
The roof is the worst thing, the house itself is still.
Okay, but, but I, but I don't think that, you know, the, we're not gonna be, painting is, that's not what we're really looking at. We're looking at the substantive things in terms of the roof and any other things that have to do with the structure. So I would support thirty days, but ma'am, you've gotta, you've gotta come back with a, with a plan and give us, uh, some comfort that the, the, the plan is gonna be able to be executed and you've got the, not getting into specifics, but you have the financial resources to, to follow through with the plan. Um, so that's where I stand, Commissioner Priceiger.
Uh, I can support that, Ms. Derringer, uh, I know you said you were purchasing shingles, uh, I'm sure you're not gonna, uh, put the roof on yourself.
No, I have.
And once again, I'm not a builder and, uh, you know, a little bit about things. I don't think there's a roofer in the country that would take your shingles and put them on that roof. That roof has to be stripped down to nothing, that is a danger, somebody gets up there, it's gonna fall through. So I, I mean, I'm willing thirty days, but, uh, I hope we don't hear the same thing in thirty days.
Yeah, um, can you, can you live with that, Commissioner, uh, Leonhard, thirty days?
Yeah, thirty days, I'm in great.
Commissioner, Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, but this is the last time for me.
Yeah.
And, and we're gonna have to rebuild the roof before they, before they shingle it, it's not just shingle it.
Fix the roof, don't put any money in paint, put it all on the roof.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, I think you've gotten some good feedback from us, uh, and.
If I have the roof where I can, at least the roof fixed, so I can get the shingles or whatever it's called to put on the roof, that would be, at least I done something, right?
You need to get an expert to come in, because I think they'll confirm what Commissioner Bowder and.
I have two friends that put roofs on for a living and they're going to help me. They said they would come up and help me, but I ain't got the models down.
You have to be a licensed roofer to get a, to get a permit, so it would have to be a luci, uh, uh,
Well, we got a permit to put the roof on.
It would have to be a, a lou, a roofer license with the state of Kansas to get a permit from the city.
Right.
That's a, that's a statewide thing.
Don't we have a permit for the roof?
I don't believe so.
I know we got a permit for, for something there.
We, we've given you a thirty day extension, ma'am, and, uh, but I, but I, but we're gonna, we're gonna see and, um, if there's no, if there's no progress, um, I know that I feel like, Commissioner, I, Commissioner Bowder, I would, would not be predisposed to give another thirty days, I think I would say move forward, uh, with demolition. But we'll see, I hope you can make the, the improvements.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next property?
Okay, uh, so the next two, uh, these were at the July fourteenth meeting, uh, they, they were just representatives of the owners here and they were directed to, um, bring the necessary documentation regarding legal ownership or authorization by the legal owner to act on the owner's behalf within two weeks, they both did that. Um, so they were given the remainder of the sixty day extension, so we're gonna review, review those. Uh, the first is nine thirty four Ottawa, which is a single family house, and there has been no change since the July fourteenth meeting.
Is there, ma'am, are you, are you, are you gonna comment on this particular one or not? Okay, all right, um, nine thirty four Ottawa, no change, so I think at this point we proceed with demolition? Is that the demo? Okay, Commissioner Priceiger gives a thumbs up, Commissioner, uh, Leonhard?
Yeah, proceed to demo.
Yes, Commissioner Bowder?
I agree, proceed with the demo.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, and I said proceed with the demolition, so that one's, five, five commissioners say proceed with demolition, next one, please?
Okay, the next one is seven nineteen North Ninth Street, this is a garage only, um, and there has been no change. I believe they were attempting, uh, to work with our, uh, community development coordinator on getting funds to demolish this, um, but there's been no change as of this time.
Okay, all right, um, so I think this one's in the same category, we'll, I would support proceeding with demolition, Commissioner Priceiger?
Uh, demo.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Proceed the demo.
Commissioner Bowder?
Proceed with the demo.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, proceed with the demo.
Okay, so that, that completes the, the properties, correct, Ms. Hurley?
Correct.
Um, can, can you, uh, we, we're gonna need a, a motion?
So I'll just go over, um, what I've got on my notes, so the properties, um, that you have elected to move forward with the demolition on are four oh seven North Twentieth, sixteen twelve West Seventh, four twenty Ottawa, nine thirty four Ottawa, and seven nineteen North Ninth. The properties that you have elected to give an extension to October twenty seventh are ten thirty three O Sage, nineteen fourteen West Seventh, five oh four Miami, five thirteen Lawrence, seven oh one South Second, and eight twenty four O Sage, and you have elected to remove seven oh eight Kiowa.
Okay, um, we want all, Ms. Williamson, all this in one motion or three?
Yeah, you can do the all in one and the motion would be something like move to, um, proceed with the properties as discussed and agreed by, um, the commission and as annotated by the city clerk.
In, in terms of the proceeding with demolition and so?
Yeah, so, so.
So do we have one motion or do, or do we go with the demolition?
You're gonna do, you're gonna do one motion.
Okay.
Because I've annotated what you're, what you, um, agreed to with each one.
Right.
So you can do one motion that would be something like move to proceed with the, um, as discussed and agreed to on each property and as annotated by the city clerk.
And that will cover all the properties, in terms of what Ms. Hurley just summarized for us, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, move forward on the, uh, properties that we've discussed as per, uh, the discussions we had and as annotated by the city clerk.
Okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Leonhard, a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, and we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Uh, Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we've, um, we've approved the, the motion with the disposition of the properties as we discussed during the last probably half an hour or forty minutes, seems like, but. Thank you for your, uh, input and, um, this particular agenda item, Ms. Hurley. Next is Resolution B twenty two sixty two, set public hearing to adopt redevelopment project plan, Price? Price Chopper, Price Chopper.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is exactly, uh, what the mayor just outlined, this is simply setting a public hearing date to consider the adoption of the redevelopment, uh, district of the, uh, redevelopment project plan. Um, this is another in our series of items related to the Price Chopper Complete Renovation Project. The plan was heard at the September fourteenth Planning Commission meeting and they made the finding that the project plan is consistent with the intent of the city's comprehensive plan and this resolution would simply set the date where the commission would hear that item, which is October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Kramer on this particular agenda item? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution B twenty two sixty two and set the public hearing for this resolution for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bowder, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we're gonna begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Com- Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we've adopted Resolution B twenty two sixty two. Next is Resolution B twenty two sixty three, set public hearing to establish a community improvement district for the Price Chopper project.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, city manager Paul Kramer, again, this, uh, also sets a public hearing date for the same night, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. This is for the establishment of a community improvement district. On May sixth, twenty twenty, the city and the developer signed a public incentive pre-development agreement and the proposed method of financing for a C I D would be a zero point four zero C I D sales tax to be levied on, um, goods, uh, at that location. And so this would set the public hearing for that item for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, any questions or comments for the city manager on this particular agenda item? Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, Mr. Kramer, uh, I see that, uh, it will expire in twenty two years, maximum of twenty two years. Is there a, a dollar amount that, an either or, or is it just a time?
Um, the, the parameters of the C I D are outlined in the development agreement, so you'll also consider a development agreement that will outline, um, staff's recommendations for the use of those C I Ds.
And we'll talk about that in twenty second, twenty seven. Uh, yes, I mean, that's when we would have, we could have that, or it could be set up for when you have second consideration. You have finalization of the C I D and finalization of the project plan, uh, that is generally when we have had, uh, the, those, both of those are final approvals tied to the, uh, at the same, contemporaneous execution of the development agreement. So I don't know whether we'll have that all done in, at time enough, but I think our goal would be to have that and those dollars figured out by the time you have that public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kramer or Mr. Waters? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, adopt Resolution B two two six three, set the public hearing for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Leonhard, a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we are gonna begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we've adopted Resolution B twenty two sixty three. Next is Resolution B twenty two sixty four, twenty twenty capital fund program grant Leavenworth Housing Planters Two.
The next four items on the agenda will be handled by Julie Hurley, the, uh, director of planning and community development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. As you said, this is a resolution to accept the twenty twenty, uh, capital fund program grant for Planters Two. This is a grant that we receive annually from HUD, um, this is pretty standard, um, the HUD just requires that a resolution be passed to accept that grant, uh, the amount of our grant is one hundred forty five thousand dollars, one hundred forty five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, that amount is the maximum we can receive and that number is based on us being fully leased up, um, at the property. So that number is set by HUD.
Good.
Um, so, uh, we would just ask that you, uh, approve the resolution.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Hurley? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution, uh, does it have a number, B twenty two sixty four?
Yep.
Uh, accepting the twenty twenty capital fund program grant, uh, for Planters Two in the amount of, uh, one hundred forty five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bowder?
Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson. You second it, Mr. Wilson?
I second it.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson has seconded the motion of Commissioner Priceiger. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we've adopted the Resolution B twenty two sixty four. Next is Resolution B twenty two sixty five, five year action plan and capital fund annual statement, performance and evaluation report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, again, this is an annual item that we do, uh, for Planters Two over there. This is, um, the twenty twenty to twenty twenty four capital fund program five year action plan and the capital fund program annual statement and performance and evaluation report that we have to submit to HUD annually, um, just, uh, outlining our expenditures of those funds. Um, and just, we would just note that we just completed the pipe replacement project over there, um, use, using these funds um, that are included in this report, that project was, um, in total around nine hundred thousand dollars, is all paid for out of these capital funds. Um, and the next project that we're undertaking using the funds that we have in this account is our next item on the agenda, replacing, um, the fire panel over there, so just to kinda give you an idea of some of what we do with that money.
Yeah, I'm glad you were able to review what was done in, um, earlier this year, right, twenty, twenty twenty in terms of that? All that work that was done in Planters Two. Um, any questions or comments for Ms. Hurley? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, accept Resolution B twenty two sixty five, the Leavenworth Housing Planters Two capital fund five year action plan and capital fund annual statement and performance and evaluation report.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bowder, a second.
Okay, motion and a second on this particular agenda item, we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we've approved Resolution B twenty two sixty five. Next is consider contract to replace fire panel at Planters Two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this is to review and award the bid for the fire panel replacement at Planters Two. Uh, the fire panel, as I understand it, is sort of the brain of the fire safety system in the building, which would include the alarms and, um, sprinklers and all of that. Um, so proposals were received, um, by our housing manager Andrea Cheatham over at Planters Two, we received three proposals. Um, the staff would recommend that we, uh, accept the lowest proposal, which is from Progressive Electronics in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred and forty three dollars. Um, and I, I would just note that bid, uh, it looks substantially lower than the other two we received. That's because Progressive Electronics is the only authorized dealer of the particular panel that is compatible with our existing system, um, and so that's why they're able to offer the, uh, this option at a much lower price than their competitors, so. Yeah, so this panel, um, like I said, is compatible with the existing equipment that we've got over there. So we would just, um, ask the authorized, the housing authority to, um, accept the low proposal for that fire panel replacement and repair in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred and forty three dollars to Progressive Electronics.
Um, just one question is, uh, assuming we approve this, um, contract, what's the timeline? Just general timeline for the work, you know?
I'm, I'm not sure, but I, as I understand it, they're, they should be able to start here pretty quickly. Um, it is a fairly necessary, uh, repair, the fire panel re, uh, malfunctioned over the summer and so we need to get that as quick as possible.
Is that something that we're waiting for the next calendar year?
Correct, nope, nope, this is something that'll happen right away.
If, any questions or comments for Ms. Hurley? Same thought, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, uh, accept a low bid from Progressive Electronics Incorporated in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred and forty three dollars for the fire panel replacement repair at Planters Two.
Second, is there a second?
Commissioner Leonhard, I second.
Okay, thank you, motion and a second on the floor, Commissioner, we're gonna begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye is the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, five to zero, so we've, uh, this motion has been approved. Uh, and so we've, uh, this proposal, uh, awarded to this contract Progressive Electronics Incorporated. Thank you, appreciate it. Next, consider bid for demolition project, C D twenty twenty hyphen zero one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this is the bid, uh, that we're awarding for the demolition of six properties that were previously, uh, considered at the July fourteenth meeting of this year. fourteenth meeting of this year. Um, these were the six properties that the commission elected to move forward with demolishing at that time. Um, the, the properties we're taking down include five fifteen North Fifth, uh, garage, uh, seven nineteen North Ninth, and then four single-family residential properties at three oh six North Third, five fifteen Pawnee, seven fourteen Kiowa, and seven eighteen Dakota. Uh, we only received one bid, uh, for this project, uh, in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars from Midland Wrecking. I would just note that this is a, this is a contractor that we're familiar with, um, and staff was comfortable with the amount of that bid, um, even though they are the only one that we received.
Any, uh, questions or comments for Ms. Hurley on this particular agenda item?
Ms. Hurley, if we approve this, when do you see the bulldozers running?
Um, it'll still be realistically two to three weeks. Uh, once we get the bid awarded to a contractor, there are still some final boxes to check before they can get out there, but, um, I would say, yeah, a couple to three weeks.
And, uh, there's four different properties here, uh, I think, yeah, four.
We've got six total.
Six, six. And so, if we do those individually, it'd be much higher than sixty thousand seven hundred and eighteen, would it?
Uh, potentially, there, there generally is some economies of scale and those type of thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of hoping that Ms., uh, Conley of the garage, ten thirty-three Osage, would kind of maybe rethink her position, because if they have to demolish that by themselves rather than in a group, uh, her cost of demolition is probably gonna be higher than if we get it cheaper by the dozen, if you will. Okay.
Okay, any com, other comments or questions for Ms. Hurley on this particular agenda item? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the demolition contract, uh, bid by Denton Excavating Doing Businesses Midland Wrecking for the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars for the six properties listed.
Is there a second? Second?
Commissioner Wilson, I second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Uh.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye, aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries. So, we've, uh, we've accepted the bid from Denton Excavating Midland Wrecking for sixty thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Go back up here for a minute here. Okay, so now we are at, um, the consent agenda, and so I'm gonna turn over to Commissioner Leonhard for the consent agenda.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve claims for September fifth, two thousand and twenty through September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-one cents, net amount for payroll number nineteen, effective September eleventh, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of three hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. No police and fire attention.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second on the consent agenda. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. Five to zero, ayes have it, motion carries, so we've approved the consent agenda for today's regular city commission meeting. Uh, so we are gonna go, as we do at the end of all our meetings, around the horn, and I'm gonna begin with the city manager, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank everybody who participated in Lovingworth. Uh, the drive-in movie night on Saturday was the conclusion of the planned events. Uh, I'd like to remind everybody that the passport program continues to the end of the month. Um, I know our assistant city manager, Taylor Tetter, has received a lot of good feedback from the businesses that participated in the passport program, um, that they've seen a lot of new customers in, so I hope, um, we continue that and those customers return to those businesses, um, even after the passport program. So, I'd like to thank, uh, the commission, the staff, uh, Taylor and all his work, uh, Christie Lee, our commu, uh, Convention of Visitors Bureau Director, and, um, O'Neil, um, Marketing and Events for Lovingworth, and all, all of our residents who participated. And remember to keep going out, uh, get your passport filled till the end of the month, and then we'll announce a date where you can redeem your, your filled-in passport for, um, some merchandise, uh, some more information coming on that. And then, uh, I encourage, uh, the citizens to follow our Mill and Overlay project on the city's, uh, social media sites. As we continue to mill and overlay, um, use our taxpayers' dollars to go back to our roads, uh, one point eight million dollars plus in new road work going on right now in the city.
They seem to be pretty efficient in terms of the work they're doing, um, if, if twentieth street north of Spruce is any indication, so that's great. Um, any questions or comments for Mr. Kramer? If not, I'll go to Commissioner Wilson. Um, any comments or questions?
No, sir, no comments.
Okay, um, we're gonna go to Commissioner Leonhard. Any comments?
Yeah, Commissioner Leonhard, um, yeah, I have a little bit of a funny, I guess, and, uh, Commissioner Bowder and I spoke about it. Friday, um, I had to leave early for an appointment, so I was able to go down Twentieth, and, but I knew coming back I wouldn't be able to. I'd have to take the detour, so, which was fine, um, because they oiled the street when I left, but I knew, uh, they had Twentieth blocked off, and my street's, uh, High Street, uh, so they had that blocked off, and the street, which I can't remember, right there by Suburban, what's the name of that street?
Shawtown.
Yeah, Shawtown. So, as, as I proceed down Eighteenth on the detour, so then I go to Shawnee, and come to find out, the one-way street that we just, you know, implemented, um, I had to go down the wrong way to get to my house, so, um, I know my husband did. I have several neighbors. I said, that's the only way we could get home, so that's what we did. But I got a lot of good comments on the street maintenance.
Okay.
And that's all I have. I thought it might make people smile, you know?
Can't say it.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Priceiger?
Uh, the, the street work that's being done is, uh, you know, very well-received. You're doing an outstanding job. I know that our public works people are overseeing it, and it's, Little Joe's is the name of the company, is it not? Little, Little Joe's Asphalt Street, and, uh, just outstanding work, very professional. Some has been done in my neighborhood, and, uh, uh, just respect the work that they do, and it's hard work, uh, and, but the results are outstanding, and the city will look better for it.
Good, that's all. Thank you, Commissioner Priceiger. Commissioner Bowder?
Yeah, I, I just, you know, we've, during this time, we all are a little depressed, and I think, um, some of us are very angry over the situation, and, um, we still have a lot of loss of jobs, a loss of income for our people, and, uh, I just wanna put out a prayer for all those people. We try to help who we can, um, with our different organizations. Um, I do think, not to ramble on, but I do think that, you know, the good community PR in the Lovingworth, I've heard a lot of good things from people who did go to the drive-in especially, and, um, down to the riverfront, down to, down to the Landing Park. Um, I think these are good things, and maybe, you know, there are things that people could continue to get, get people excited. As we come into the winter, we're gonna be inside more, so that'll make it harder, but, um, that's just some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowder. Uh, the only thing that I had, I would have the opportunity to attend that kind of the ribbon-cutting ceremony on the mural that's on the east side of the Leavenworth Main Street building, and that was last Thursday, I believe, and it was well-attended. The artist, Lee, and I'm blanking on her last name, she's, she, she did wonderful work to scale that particular mur, mural is really amazing, and, um, you know, it kind of, it, it's, it's an addition to the public art that already exists in the city, which is very, very good, and, uh, I know that we got briefed a few weeks ago about kind of more public art with the kind of passageways program, so I'm look, I think it's really a good thing in terms of accentuating the great things of our, our downtown, improving the appearance and image of the downtown, and just making it, uh, more beautiful, uh, you know, each and every day, month, and year. So, I was happy to be able to attend. Ms. Christie Lee was there from the city, and, uh, myself, and, uh, of course, the board, many of the board members from Leavenworth, uh, Main Street, plus the executive director, um, Wendy Scheit, so. That is all I have. Um, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Commissioner, there was a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, uh, to adjourn this evening's meeting. We're gonna begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Uh.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceiger?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye. The ayes have it, five to zero, motion carries, so we are adjourned.